Here is the kingdom of God. Where is the presence of God? Here is the presence of God. Where is the miracle happening? Here is a miracle happening. Every Sunday you are going to see a miracle happen in the church. Continue to see. I'm sure you've been seeing, but you're going to see more of it. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! And tonight, my message is going little further. It says, what does it say? Looked upon and what is the next experience? Our hands have touched or handled the word of life. So that is the message that I'm going to speak to you. Touching the word of life. If you have never had this experience, if you touch an electric line, the power flows. If you touch God, you will receive something tonight. Hearing is good. Seeing is even better. Looking at this is very beautiful. But what God is asking is to touch. If I have to see, the pastor, I can see from here. But if I have to touch him, I have to go much closer. Let me tell you, God wants to hug you. God wants to carry you. He wants to carry you. Your range is so far away, you are on a hearing distance. You may be on a seeing distance. But tonight, I'm telling you, come to the level where you can be on a touching range. Come closer to Jesus. Where he can touch you and you can touch him. Staying far is so good. You need to have a closer walk with Jesus. Tonight is a night of miracle. I know Jesus is here. Tonight is a night of transformation because my God is here. And when he's here, he means business. He has not brought you to see a doctor or a human being. He has brought you here to see the living God. The word which created everything from nothing. The word tonight which is going to create something out of your nothing. Hallelujah! Glory to Jesus! Glory to Jesus! Hallelujah! I know all of you are tired and sleepy. Somebody called me up and said, Pastor, please pray for me. I said, what is the problem? Whenever I sit to pray, I feel very sleepy. You know, I used to go and preach in Muringu Retreat Center in Chalakudi, Kerala, where thousands used to come every week. Ten, fifteen. For ten years, God took me into that Catholic retreat center. And the first two days, people sleep there because that's the first time they get to have peace of mind. So in the presence of God on Sundays, you find many people sleeping. Don't worry. Because they don't have any peace at home, they have it here. So they are sleeping. Never mind! But make sure that you are not the yuthikos sleeping in the window side, sleep in the middle. Something happens, we can put you back. Praise the Lord. Hallelujah! There is joy in the presence of God. The lady said, please pray for me because I feel sleepy when I open the Bible. When I pray, I fall into the Bible. I asked, dear lady, have you ever fallen into a bucket of ice cream or a glass of ice cream? Never. I've never fallen into ice cream. Why? Because when I'm eating, I'm awake. I can tell you, this is more sweeter than the honey and the honeycomb. Be awake in the presence of God. Be serious in the presence of God. Be ready in the presence of God. Be expected in the presence of God. Be there to receive what he has for you tonight. He is here to touch you and transform you. You will never be the same again. You are going to go back as a new person on fire for the kingdom of God. Hallelujah! Tonight is the night when the word touches you and you touch the word. Shall we come to the main message quickly? My time is running very fast. Shall we turn to Luke's chapter? Chapter eight, verse forty-three onwards. Can somebody read that for me quickly, please? Chapter eight, no, chapter eight, verse forty-three onwards. Yes. There was a lady who was subject to bleeding for twelve years. Nobody could heal her. She spent all her living upon physicians. Nobody could cure her. Imagine the condition of a lady in the New Testament era, where she had issue of bleeding and there was no treatment. If you have an issue of bleeding, you cannot come out of your house. You can't be in public. You can't go near men. It is forbidden those days. So by custom, she's isolated all the time, twenty-four seven. She can do nothing. No public life, a private life. This is a disease that nobody wants to tell anyone else. It's a disease of secret. So sometimes you and I have secrets which we don't like to disclose to anyone else. Sometimes we carry these kind of secretive diseases for years together. We know of in the Old Testament, a man called Naaman, who was a leper, but he was a noble man. He was an army chief in Syria. But there was a secret in his life which could not be told to anyone. The secret was a terrible secret that he had leprosy. You are carrying some secrets in your life which you don't want to expose to others. And that is terrible. And that has been destroying your might, your spiritual life, your personal life, your social life, your emotional life, all your life! And here's a lady who spent everything she had somehow to escape from this disease. She was bleeding for twelve years. I'm imagining in my mind, she went to the gynecologist and said, I am bleeding. So she looks at her, makes all the tests. You know how doctors are, they write all the prescriptions and the tests. And write some iron and all, and check her pulse and her heart and everything. And then the gynecologist says, you know, you have tachycardia, your heart is beating fast and your anemia is very high. So please go to the cardiologist. So she goes to the cardiologist and the cardiologist looks at her and sees that the heart does an echo and does few other tests. And looks at her, she has tachycardia and she's bleeding and she's anemic. And then he picks up that she has some numbness in her legs also. And says, now you have some numbness in your leg. So you have been bleeding for twelve years, you better go to the neurologist. And she goes from one physician to the other physician to the other physician. And all the money is spent. That is why in America, everything is under insurance. That is why people live for only retirement, they don't live for their life. Everything is retirement plan. There's no plan for the present, it's all retirement plan. These are all demonic. Don't get bothered by all, your retirement is safe in God's hand. Your health is safe in God's hand. For forty years, he took them through all the wilderness with nobody sick in the middle. Don't come, don't prepare yourself to get sick. I had a man called Supermanin. When RCC was started, they were selling cancer treatment for two rupees as an insurance he took it. So he came to me twenty years later with brain tumor. When you are small, you prepare yourself for chemotherapy, you will become there. Prepare yourself for the kingdom of God. Not for radiation, not for chemotherapy, not for treatment, but for healing in the name of Jesus! Your mind has to be tuned the other way around. Your mind has to change from looking down to looking up. Your mind has to be changed from the policies of the world to the policies of the kingdom of God. Your mind has to be changed from thinking what you have in your heart to thinking what God has in his heart for you. Hallelujah! This lady was living a miserable life. But she heard that Jesus was coming that way. Amen? She heard that Jesus was coming. She didn't know how to go and meet him, she didn't take an appointment. She didn't go and ask Peter or John, can I meet Jesus? Many people don't reach Peter and John because Jesus, because there are so many steps. Peter, John, so many people in between. She didn't ask anyone. All what she did was to go directly and meet him. Not from the front, but from the back. It's like the Kerala government offices. You never enter from the front, you enter from the back. If you come from the front, nothing happens. You know, some places, you have two doors. Front door and back door. Thank God, heaven has only one door. We are all going to be marching as saints, soldiers for the kingdom of God. Through the front. If you are afraid and ashamed to stand for the kingdom of God, you are unfit for the kingdom of God. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! When I went to CMC Vidhiana, I see a CMC friend of mine here. So I'm so glad that there are some of you who I know here. When I went to CMC Vidhiana as a medical student in seventy-nine, I went to the CNI church, I gave my testimony on Sunday. Because I thought, in case I don't get it, I knew God is going to give me. But at least I should say the testimony in Punjab before I leave. So whole ragging time, I was called as testimony. They put many other names on it. But I was known as a man with a testimony. Are you ashamed of Jesus? Are you ashamed of the kingdom of God? You're bold about your degree, you're bold about your children, you're bold about your achievements. But are you bold about the cross of Calvary? We need a change of attitude. We need a change of minds. Where we need to be bold, we need to be bold! In 2015, when I came, somebody told me, it's very difficult to share gospel in America. I was sharing gospel with a psychiatrist today on the flights. His name is Raymond Moody, seventy-two-year-old man. I thank God for him, I enjoyed my time with him. He has been doing a research on something called near-life, near-death experiences. I said, if I come here, I want to do more than that, near death and beyond death. And I want to make everything scientific. He said, it's not been scientifically proven. I said, I said, do you really believe now? He said, yeah, 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 I do believe now, it's very convincing. And he told me hundreds of stories. I don't want to spend your time telling you those stories today. But life after death is real. Eternity is real. Heaven is real. God is real. Devil is real. Your life is real! You are real! And your life is not going to end here, it is eternal! Tonight, we are listening to the word of God which will transform your life forever. You don't need to continue the way you are, you come to Jesus. Jesus is the turning point. Jesus is the transforming point. Jesus is where you receive everything you need! Hallelujah! This lady came to Jesus. What did she do? We find the source, can we go quickly? He came, she came from behind him and touched the hem of his cloth. From the cloth, something happened, right? What happened? And immediately, she touched the garment of Jesus, the border of his garment, and immediately it stopped. In faith, all she did was go from behind and touch his garment and immediately it was stopped. I am asking you to touch the word of God tonight. So that everything that is troubling you will stop forever! It is an immediate experience that God is going to give you. Touch the garment of Jesus. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Well, being the first day, I want to share my testimony right from beginning. I want to know how many of you heard my testimony? Some of my old friends and some people. Oh, I thought everybody knew my testimony. Pastor, thank you very much for calling me. So many people haven't heard my testimony. I think if I start my testimony, I have so much to say. Maybe I should do only my testimony, somebody else can preach. My testimony is so much, you walk with God every day, it's a testimony. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Now, I'm going to give you an easy way out. Since technology is very freely available, go to the YouTube and type George Kovur, you will get my channel. And you go to the English playlist and select, you will get English messages. There are nearly hundred, more than hundred messages. And twelve episodes of my testimony called Word of Hope in English. Make sure that you hear tonight and come tomorrow, prepare to hear more. It's worse than anatomy class. By the time we go back, we are so sleepy, doctor. How can we hear all this? You want to receive something, you need to work hard. Hallelujah! Work harder in the kingdom of God and less outside. You want the paycheck from the kingdom of God, work in the kingdom of God. You want to work outside for the computer company, the infusers and the technology and want to get the payment from the heaven? Doesn't work that way, does it? Now, God heals everybody, right? So we may get a payment otherwise also. But it should be a paycheck for what you have done, work for the kingdom of God. So I am expecting all of you to get very, very intense with God in the coming days. So that by the time we leave from here, we have a touch from the Lord. Let me begin my testimony. When I was born in Thiruvallakavapagam, as you heard my mother's name, Neeru Kovur, an evangelist, when my pastor Kuruvallakovur, I was not born as lucky as you are, as blessed as you are. I was born as a hydrocephalic baby. I don't know how many of you know what hydrocephalus means. Hydro means water, cephalus means head. A huge head with a small body and water inside. Now, I operate such children, I put a tube in their brain and pump it to the stomach called ventral glupen peritoneal shunt operation. I thank God that there was no surgery at that time. My parents took me to many, many hospitals. If there was the surgery, I would have been operated by some neurosurgeon. Shunt block, infection, medicine, hospital, doctor, miserable life! Dependent life, horrible life! There was no surgery. They took out water from my brain four times from different centers. Doctor Jacob Chandi, the first neurosurgeon of our country, and Doctor Jacob Abraham, who taught me neurosurgery in CMC. Well, my professor looked at me as a little boy and said, this boy will not survive. Even if you make him survive, he will be physically, mentally retarded, good for nothing. People may look at you and say, you're good for nothing. People may say, why are you alive? What is the purpose of your life? But I can tell you, there is a heaven looking at you this evening, saying, very good! My plans for your life are far higher than your own plans for your life. That is why you are here. God is going to open up ways and doors for you which you have never seen before. You are going to do things which you have never attempted before. Your life is going to be supernatural and not natural. Because you are going to live and walk with the word of God! Hallelujah! Your joy and pain is going to leave tonight. Your sickness that has been troubling you for years is going to leave tonight in the name of Jesus! I speak healing in the name of Jesus. I speak deliverance in the name of Jesus. I claim the city in the name of Jesus. I declare victory, Jehovah Nisi, my banner. When everybody left me, as a sick child, my parents had come to know the Lord. My father and mother brought me back home and kept me in their prayer mats. They knew Psalm 121. I will lift up my hills, my eyes unto the hills. From where does my help come? My help comes from the God who created heaven and earth. That hill is open for you tonight. Whichever area you're struggling, whichever area you're weak, whichever area you're needing tonight, you don't have to continue anymore in that position. Because that same heaven, that hill is open. Lift your eyes on Jesus. Turn your eyes upon Jesus. He is going to touch you. He is going to touch you. He's waiting to touch you. God spoke to them. You know what God said? Seek first the kingdom of God and his righteousness, and everything shall be added unto you. They left the sick child, vomiting child with the grandmother, got into an Enfield motorbike, took this Bible, the word of God, went out into the world preaching, saying that Jesus is the savior of sinners. He saves you from sin, sickness, and he's going to come back as a king. When they went out into the king world with the gospel, I'm sure the Satan devil would have come and said, hey, your son is sick, go and take care of him first before preaching. It's a moment. Sometimes the devil come and tell you, you become right first and then start sharing. You learn something more and will never start, start today. God is going to make things different in your life. Don't wait for that day. Today is the day of salvation. Today is the day of miracle. Today is the day when you're going to start. Today, God is going to start a new beginning in your life. Things are going to change. When they went out for the kingdom of God, the kingdom of God came down for me. Jesus healed me. Not only that Jesus healed me, he made me a neurosurgeon. Imagine when Jesus starts some work, he will never do halfway. He is the order and perfecter, he will complete it in your life. He will never, ever leave you halfway. He will complete in your life. My God is able to complete it in your life. Hallelujah! A God who can heal a hydrocephalic baby and make him into a neurosurgeon can make and do things in your life. He is looking for that person, that one person, who is willing for that complete surrender. Not fifty-fifty, nor here am I useful. God is going to bless your life. That is my short testimony, I will tell you more of it, let's come back to the word. What happened? What happened to her? She was immediately healed. So what happened? Jesus asked a question, verse forty-five. Who touched me? Jesus is asking a question, who touched me? In a big crowd, when a lot of people are touching, he is asking a question, who touched me? Then what happened?
When they all denied it, Peter said, "Master, the people are crowding and pressing around you." And what Jesus said, "Someone touched me."
When the whole crowd is trying to touch, press and push, Jesus is asking, "Somebody touched me." What is the difference between the crowd pressing, pushing and the touch from this lady? Did the crowd receive anything? They pushed him around. Did the crowd know anything? Did the crowd believe anything? They just came to see the shoshar, they came for a show. They came to see something. But this lady came for a healing. She came for a miracle. She touched in faith. There is so much of difference by just touching and touching in faith. Touching in expectation, touching to receive something. And she was ready after twelve years for her healing. Amen? Are you ready for your healing? Is this the day when God is going to flow his power in your heart, in your life, into your body and transform you completely and change you and make you into a new person? Hallelujah! Is this the night that he's going to touch you and start a new beginning in your life? Are you ready for that? Or are you just pushing around? Are you part of the crowd which comes and goes? Hallelujah! She was so much ready for that flow. Who touched me? See, she came from the back and she touched him from the back and she was ready to go back from the back. Some people like big mega churches because pastor doesn't know who comes and who goes. Today, I saw pastor was looking because he has noted who is new, who is old, he knows everything. It's very easy when you have a small number. People enjoy mega churches because they can be there without knowing what is happening. But Jesus had only twelve disciples. You have to start very serious following. I'm not against mega churches, I'm not saying be in large number. But don't be prepared to come from the back and go from the back. Be ready to come into the front. Jesus did not leave a lady who was sick for twelve years, who was so scared of him, who didn't want to meet anyone, what didn't want to be known in the public, wanted to come from behind and go from behind and be a secret believer. Jesus did believe her. Isn't that too bad? It is really bad. How could he be so merciless in catching her? She afterward got the healing. She could have gone from the back. Tonight's message is, why did Jesus catch her? Who touched me? Why was this question? Why did she, Jesus has to ever ask this question? How many of you have been touched by God? I know all of you have some time or other. I want to see the number of hands who have been touched by God someday or other. Jesus is asking the question, who touched me? There is a reason. Now, the reason is very important because you all touched him. Hallelujah! The reason is, now you're going to hear very carefully. Why did he make her come? She realized, can we read the next verse? Someone touched me. I know that power has gone, out from me. Next verse. Then the woman, unnoticed, so she wanted to go back from the meeting without telling her testimony. You have been coming to service for so many years and have never told the testimony. I have people attending some churches, even my own church there, who've been healed by, from cancer, not telling anyone, even now. Had the second tumor operated and healed, not telling anyone, still shy to say that I had a deadly disease and God healed me. I caught this person one day and said, why are you not telling the testimony? He said, suppose it comes back? Look at that! Why do you fail? Because you doubts. What is the opposite of fail? Doubts. Why do you doubt? Because you fear. So God wants to take the fear out of you. When the fear goes, what goes? Doubt goes. When the doubt and fear goes, what comes in? Faith comes in! So why are you not testifying? Because you're afraid. You still have doubts. God wants to change that situation. She wanted to go from behind, but Jesus is going to catch her. There are some reasons. One is, it is very clearly stated, my power flew from me. She doesn't, he, God does not want the lady to go with the impression that the power is from his cloth. Not from the garment. Some people run after garments and tops and pieces. Where is the power coming from? From Jesus! Not from any material. From his stripes, you are healed. By his stripes, you are healed. By his blood, you are cleansed. No other place. As a neurosurgeon, I know how to operate, but I don't know how to heal. It is Jesus who heals. I sit it up and God heals. Hallelujah! He said, power flew from me. That is the first thing. He wanted her to know it is from healing, it's from him. And also wanted her to know it is with full knowledge of him. He knew her and he healed her. Second thing, what is the other reason? If she had gone from behind, would she have ever seen her face, his face? Not, what would he have seen? His backside, there are so many backside Christians who see God's backside, that itself is wonderful. So that is enough. Just like Moses who was kept in a, in a crypt of the rock and he passed by. Moses was very happy, that was enough. But it says, God is looking for a man who wants to see him face to face. God wants to look at your face. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Isn't that interesting that God is interested in talking to you face to face? Praise the Lord! If you have never had that experience, tonight be that day of experience. In John chapter ten, it says, verse twenty-seven, "My sheep hear my voice and they follow me." If you are God's child, you will hear his voice and you will follow him. If you haven't heard his voice, then make sure that you hear it today. Have you ever heard any mother or father calling their children? They call them by name. John ten says, "I call them by name." And I go before them. Has God called you by name? Have you heard his call? Let today be the day when you are very clear about his voice. Today be the day when you are very clear about his touch. Jesus wanted her to know that it was he who healed her. Jesus wanted her to see his face. Hallelujah! What else did he want her to do? We'll lead forward. What else did he want her to do? Yes. Verse, continue please.
"Then who touched me?" Jesus asked.
Yes.
"When they all denied it."
Yes.
"Peter said..."
Verse forty-seven.
"Then the woman, seeing that she could not go unnoticed."
Yes.
"Came stumbling and fell at His feet."
Yes.
"In the presence of all the people."
Yes.
"She told why she had touched Him and how she had been instantly healed."
She told her testimony! God gave her an opportunity to tell her testimony in the public! Imagine a scary lady who was going to run away, has become a lion now, standing there with the power of the Holy Spirit, testifying. Amen? You think you cannot do it? You will do it! When the power anointing falls on you, you will be my witnesses. But you need to wait for the power to fall on you. Receive the power from above and you will be my witness. She received the power and she became a witness. And then what happened? What is the next third, the next reason? What is the next reason?
Then he said to her,
Yes.
"Daughter, your faith has..."
So she, God wanted to call her daughter. The only lady Jesus called in the New Testament, daughter, is this lady. Do you know that? Nobody was there to talk to her in the last twelve years. Nobody was there to call her daughter. Nobody was there to console her. Nobody was there to be with her. Nobody was there to be a friend of us. Jesus realized the situation and Jesus wanted to call her daughter. It's good to receive the healing. It's good to come from behind. It's good to have certain experience in the kingdom of God. But having a face-to-face encounter with God is much greater. Having a call from Him as a daughter is much greater! God wants to call you daughter and son today. Open your ears to hear the clear call of Jesus this evening. Hallelujah? Daughter, what a beautiful thing. I can tell you till the end of her life, she would have never forgotten that call in her ear. The powerful call of the Son of God, daughter. Then what happened, daughter?
Your faith has healed you.
Your faith has healed you.
Go in peace.
Praise the Lord. So not the touch alone. What is that healer? The act of faith is important, but faith is even more important. Your faith has healed you. Go in.
Peace.
So she has a bonus to take back home. What is that? Peace! If she has gone from behind, would she have got peace? No. That is why many Christians come on Sundays. They never get peace. They are backward Christians, seeing only the backside. They have everything. They have healing. They have money. They have education. They have degree. They want only the benefits that they can quickly get. They don't want the eternal values which He wants to give you separately. You come in front of Him, there are many more things He has in store for you. He who just came for healing, but He has some bonus experience for you. You came for a job, but He has something greater for you. You came for some of your difficulties, but God has a higher purpose. Do you know the meaning that Jesus said, "Go in peace"? That one word? The peace that passes all understanding. The peace of God that will flow into your heart that minute, no one can ever take it away. No sickness can take it away. No devil can take it away. No circumstances can take it away because He is the Prince of Peace. And when you have Jesus in your heart, you have the Prince of Peace in your heart. Are you troubled in your heart this evening? God wants to tell you, let not your heart be troubled. He wants to take trouble out of your heart. Who is the one who gives you trouble? It's not God. It is your enemy. And He is there everywhere. Why trouble at work? Because He is there at work. Why trouble in the family? Because He's there in the middle of the thing. Why trouble inside the church? Because He is there when the saints come together. If you have any doubt, read Job's book. It says, "He is in the middle when the saints comes together." Devil is rarely in the bar shop, I mean, where the liquor is sold on disco because they are already in his hands. He is around here to catch the guys who are going towards God. He doesn't want the ones who are already in his hands. So He is there in the middle of all these things. But don't worry, Jesus is in your heart. Nothing can take away your peace. No devil can ever touch you. Hallelujah? Some of you, forgetting peace and satisfaction and good sleep, read Psalm ninety-one before going to sleep. I heard recently, if you are in trouble, quickly read Psalm ninety-one. It's good to read Psalm ninety-one. I also love Psalm ninety-one. But if you don't have the experience of the verse one, the rest of the verses are meaningless. You have to be under the shadow of the Almighty. You have to remain under the wings. Today, this evening, let me tell you, you are under the wings of healing. You are under the wings of protection. This church is covered by the Spirit of God. God is here! I don't know whether you realize the great privilege and honor you have. You are serving the living God. The devil may say, "Everything is over." Jesus says, "It's just the beginning." I have not finished with you. I'm just beginning with you. This lady just came thinking that she wanted only the healing. But Jesus wanted to see her face to face. Jesus wanted to tell her, "Daughter, call her a word of love." Jesus wanted to make her give a testimony. Above all, Jesus wanted to give her His peace. His peace is not an ordinary peace. In His peace is a peace where He takes a pillow and goes into a boat when He knows the storm is coming. That is peace of God. Where right into the trouble with the pillow in your hand. Right into the fire, not with firefighting experience, but with the presence of God. We get into the fire, thinking how we can fight the fire. Let God fight your fire. You get into the fire with God with you! I hope you're with me! Stop fighting your troubles. Stop firefighting. Stop trying to do what you know best. Give it to God to do that. All you need to do is stretch out your hands in faith and touch His garments. Hallelujah? This lady who had no experience before, this lady who had never met Christ before, could go back home with so much of change. Much more is waiting for us. I'm going to come to the conclusion. Shall we read the next verse? Next, next verse.
While Jesus was still speaking,
Yes.
"Someone came from the house of Jairus."
Yes.
"The synagogue leader."
Yes, I didn't have much time. That's why I didn't read the forty-one and forty, forty-two. Because He was actually going to the house of Jairus where there was a twelve-year-old person waiting for a touch from Him. Think of a time when he was busy running towards for an important appointment. He waited to speak with this woman. Do you realize the importance? He could have given the healing on the way and just walked off, not waiting any time. Let me tell you, God doesn't waste time. He waits on you for a reason. He was busy running to a house. On the way, he wanted to have an encounter with a woman who just wanted touch and go. Touch and go. Just like Sakyas who wanted to be on the top of the tree and say, "Look at Jesus and see how it was." Jesus saw Sakyas and said, "Come down. I want to have supper with you." Many a times, we want to have a distant relationship with God, to call Him when we really need Him, but not to take Him back home with us. Not to have a hundred percent surrender, but fifty-fifty. Tonight, when you go from here, God does not want you to have a fifty-fifty, but hundred percent to come back with you in your room, to make you a serious child of God, a believer, a person who has a closer walk with you. Hallelujah? Hallelujah? How many of you are excited for such an experience? If you are ready, close your eyes for a minute of prayer. I want to take a few minutes in prayer with everyone. You've been hearing this message many a times. This is not the first time you heard this message. But tonight, God has spoken to you differently. You know that God is a God who can touch you. You know you have been living a life with fifty-fifty. You know that He's looking for a hundred percent surrender. Are you ready for that? Everybody with eyes closed and hearts open, not looking at any other person, saying, "Lord, here am I. I want to touch you." I want to receive the same power that flew from you to that lady. I want a inner healing. I want a bodily healing. I want a healing of my mind. I want a healing of my family. I want a healing of my situation. Lord, let that power flow on through my life. God is looking, an opportunity to speak to you. Are you willing to come forward and face Him? He wants to speak to you and call your son and daughter, and He wants to give you the peace that passes all understanding. When you say, "Lord, here I am, completely surrendering myself fully into you, not keeping anything behind, my life, my job, my future, my family, everything that you have given, I give it to you." God is looking for someone who is ready for that complete surrender. If there is anybody who is sick, who is troubled, who is worried, I just want to pray for you. If there is anybody who is ready for a closer walk, want to be used mightily by the kingdom of God, by the Spirit of God, by the purposes of God, He's looking for a surrender. Let tonight be a day, a night of your surrender. I want to pray for all of you who are willing to pray with me. All I need to see, I need to see your right hand. I see many hands going. Don't look here and there. It's not for anyone else. It's for you. I see some children lifting their hands. I'm so grateful to them because I accepted Christ when I was five years old. I see many old people taking their hands up. I know some of you are dedicating your life. Jesus is seeing you. He is watching and waiting for you. He's looking for a complete surrender. I am happy for all those who have made a hundred percent commitment. "Lord, here I am." I want to pray for you. If there is somebody struggling in your life financially, without job, without job. If you have a problem tonight, God wants to open a new way for you. A new opening which God has made for you. There is a prayer waiting. All those who want a prayer, would you stand up wherever you are? Those who would like to have a prayer for your life, wherever you are, just stand up. I'm going to make a small prayer for you. Don't look here and there. All those who are ready for a prayer for your life, for your family, for your children, anything that you are struggling, just be wherever you are. And close your eyes and tell whatever you need to Jesus. Stretch out your arms and touch Him tonight. Receive that power. He is here to touch you. Stretch out your arms and receive that power. He is here to touch you. Loving heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful evening. We thank you for your unchanging word. We thank you for your promises. We thank you for your miraculous presence that is there this evening. We thank you for the church master. We thank you for your servant who is ministering, his family, and all those who are helping in the worship and ministry. We thank you for everyone who has come for this evening. We especially want to commend these people, master, who stood up in commitment, in surrender, in your presence, master. Let tonight be a night of transformation. Tonight be a night of supernatural in their life where your power flows down from heaven and touches them and transforms them. Thank you, Lord, because you're touching their lives. Thank you, Lord, because you're transforming them. Thank you, Lord, and you're opening up things which you have never done this before in their life. New things, something brand new. Lord, we thank you because they are very precious and honorable in your sight. In the name of Jesus, I bless them. Let them be a blessing in their family. Let them be a blessing wherever they are working. Let them be a blessing in this nation and their church. In the name of Jesus, I pray peace upon them. Let them go back with peace. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Shall we all stand together and sing the song together and worship Jesus? Thank you all for your patience hearing and may God bless.